This is a regular reading of the county commission. That's the first item this one. Here's all.
Yeah.
And the next.
Here.
Barry Blackstock.
Here.
Alan Cannon.
Here.
Tim Crow.
Here.
Jackie Butler.
Here.
John Adam Moore.
Here.
Russell Clay.
Here.
Buddy Richardson.
Here.
Jerry Emerson.
Here.
Sandra Irons. Joseph Flaro.
Here.
Barry Lexington.
Here.
Mary Smith.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
John L. Wells.
Here.
James Alexander.
Here.
The other three.
Here.
All eight different. Thank you. We'll proceed with the meeting then. The next item is put the minutes on the March meeting. I've got those in the mail. Most of you made second couple approvals of the minutes of the March meeting. Any discussion? If not, Thursday, aye?
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carried. Next item is quarter reports and amendments. Number one, he gave me just a little bit. Ms. Nancy Cannon is here from the library and she wants to go to a concert, so we're going to. Live up the front. That's okay.
It's not just any concert. It's not just my first time out. I don't get those. I thank you, Mayor. I still hear you. I just feel like. Uh, I have, of course, my usual report and the needs letter. And I also have the summer weekend program scheduled, so if you want to see what's going on. Just this summer in peace. I do have a correction. Um, second page of the report, Lance, our confidence in the man. Uh, he says there is a little more than twelve thousand dollars in the building fund. Uh, and that's what was gathered, I guess, since the county has taken over our funding. And, of course, we have a little over thirty two thousand dollars in our construction ready to receive. What's left in construction. So that's, um, now forty three thousand dollars.
I think that nine thousand dollar figure I did is just what we played this year for the building fund, uh, since July. Uh, went back and looked at another report and we played a little over three thousand, uh, the last couple of years, so it's. That's, that's originally the wrong numbers.
Yeah, I wasn't exactly clear when I asked him about exactly what I needed for tonight. Uh, and, you know, as you can see, uh, I took probably over a hundred dollars to Lance's office a few weeks ago just from our collection jar. And we have a big jar that, uh, says, "Get this row and people will pay a dollar for a box at the time and ask for grants from these jars." It's one dollar, five dollars, and that also. Uh, the question that I have, um, that's, um, everybody's mind that come into the library is people are asking, "What are we going to do? Are we going to add on?" Because we've had lots and lots of people being very generous to us. And you're marking money for the building, but again, it all came because of the law. Um, and seeing if you're going to help fund this or not, the city won't do anything until we do. I can't buy grant grants because I know a lot of them. You know, we've been talking about this for about four years ago and we have an idea we have in Boston. We have a plan, um, that's to deal with how, uh, think about the cost. You know, McDonald's, it's one, two, and, um, groceries and that's just one of them.
Mr. Cannon, do you have a, do you have a, oh, one figure, one, you would make a decision?
Well, I don't know if I'm going to go to work yet. It's going to cost about five hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. Of their ass.
The next is another, excuse me, Miss Cannon, that's, that's favor was have that to be paid by the cities, all right?
I don't know. The, the city, uh, I would hope would match whatever we want.
Before we do anything, I think we need some more drawings on that, different drawings. I think, I think we get down to what you go to that. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, I will have to tell you, man, I'm really, I'm very grateful to TLM and I will have to do what you all said. This is out of my hands. Y'all will be ones that have been paid for it, but, you know, the TLM didn't approach us. But we didn't have anything, but we had any kind of plan and I did an awful lot of work for current. And they told me that their work was pretty up to a point. And as I say, I'll have to go with what you all said, but I, I've only worked with one architect before and I never had any kind of service. But, you know, y'all will know, know a whole lot more about it.
I wasn't talking about the architect. I was talking about some different plans from architects.
Okay.
Different planes. I mean, we, you know, that's still options on architects even, but, uh.
I don't know how much you're going to do without being paid. Honestly, and I don't know, you know, I've only been ringside six to one, you know, so I don't know. But, yeah, I, I can talk with you.
I'll talk to my man. Let's let the mission decide. What they want to do first.
There, uh, this year we were, I think, three or a hundred thousand dollars.
Any discussion? We saved up to pay forward six hundred dollars a month just to pay the mortgage. It don't cost us by the way, for the balance. Anything else? If not, on the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried.
Mayor, you know I gotta say one thing. Uh, if you look from things forward, uh, you know, public taxes, it's kind of appetizing as well. Uh, untraded taxes, there's just that count, uh, several things go in and out of that account. Most of that is prepayment of taxes if you look on the street tax, looking at the income. Uh, we've already got, well, this month, this quarter, Steve, between January and March, uh, we received it forty-three hundred dollars just in prepayment on taxes from two thousand fourteen tax rate. And we can't, you know, we can't even file that until October when we get the new taxes. But that's money that, you know, taxpayers are willing to, willing to put down on taxes. Again, you know, I have not planned for that, but, you know, ten, twenty, couple years ago, uh, I've been allowed to do that, so I just want to kind of keep that in mind. That's a lot of unsuccessful things that were maybe not government, but, uh, not being successful.
What you got on the county, you know, as a particular time or thing?
It's probably not the only one around, uh, western state. There are, and maybe three or four in all of what we consider western state, which include counties that are kind of experiment with it. Uh, we, we give them a walkie talkie. In fact, we went to, Adrian and I went to a class company still, uh, software. We got to go and enhance that a little more, let a lot of you know us, uh, you know Adrian, she knows that all the work. Uh, but, uh, right now we've been on big sales bridge and, uh, software department is good too. It's going to cooperate if we do the taxes, so we can create a, uh, a platform to parse the tax issue. So, it's, it's good. You got a question?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, we got a general.
Hello, how's it going? Do you think we're gonna be able to cover the, uh, quarter report? Uh, we can't assume the first, uh, at the end of March, we'd save three to four cents a minute. We're gonna send back, uh, for, uh, I think it's true. Question on that?
Thank you.
Motion made, and saying we have approval to the quarter report from the, uh, county general is presented. Any discussion, any questions? If not, on the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried, thank you. Do the next amendment. Or the solid waste.
Okay, the, on the next page, solid waste report, uh, it says sixty-one point nine seven. Normally not that high, it's kind of here to take, uh, payments for expenditures on the planning plans, uh, machine and equipment break down, so.
I love blue quotes. Thank you.
Motion made, saying we have approval to the, uh, solid waste report is presented. Any questions or discussion?
Well, uh, what about the, uh, contract, the, the cable, wherever you, you're gonna, you're gonna take your part, solid waste?
That, that doesn't take place till sixteen, fifteen or sixteen, that contract runs out?
Yes, fifteen is when it runs out, two thousand and fifteen.
Any other questions, any other discussion? If not, on the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried, thank you. You were the next gentleman, sir.
Please, we have some questions, uh, this is, uh, one, one balance, it's actually a review that we had done expecting coming in and we're asking if that's expecting to be going down. So, if you would be kind of dealing with that balance, he's fifty-five dollars. Any questions about, if you'll let me answer?
Question, that's right.
Motion made, saying we have, uh, approval to the man who said presented, solid for the general, for the general's side. Any discussion? If not, on the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried. Do the next amendment? Got all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Take care of that. Okay, the next item is going to be approval for a resolution for the litter grant. This is something we do every year that, uh, this is the money that we use for Mayor Travis caring. The, uh, people out on the highway pick up litter stuff on, uh, the grants for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, five thousand dollars on that history education, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred left over for salaries, nothing to carry. Motion made, saying we give approval to the resolution for the, uh, for the, uh, office, train of thought.
Litter grant.
Litter grant, thank you, sir. It's not only really likely to find that. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, on the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried. The next item is appoint, uh, someone, some people for the county board of virtualization. Names on that are ones we've had in the past, it's Billy Schultz, William Trice, Bobby Ruth, Manley Harden, and Jimmy Wumble.
I'd like to move with your approval, sir.
Motion made, saying we give approval to the, uh, appointment of the board of virtualization. Any questions or any discussion? Billy Schultz, William Trice, Bobby Ruth, Manley Harden, and Jimmy Wumble. Who have motion there? You don't need to make a comment.
No, I don't.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion, if not, on the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried. Next thing I gotta do, gonna be a little bit boring, I'm gonna read a letter from the control group from last year. Fast thought and order for us to stay in three-star program. A three-star program is what we get our help on our grants and stuff, so I'm like, the fire truck should just bid it. Last year it was gonna be twenty-six thousand dollars, and I cut it down to thirteen thousand, three-star. The city just got one here a while back, theirs was cut just about in half also. So here goes, you bear with me, this will be boring, I'm gonna just let it to you. Dear Mayor, dear Mayor Seaton, this letter acknowledges receipt of a copy of the two thousand fourteen fiscal year budget. The budget information received represents a counterassertion of its financial condition that may or may not reflect the current and future financial condition of the county. We have reviewed the budget and determined that projected revenues and other available funds appear sufficient to meet anticipated expenditures. Our review of the budget is so, is based solely on the information we have received and is for the purpose of determining that budget. As, as presented to this office, appears to be balancing to, uh, to appropriate sufficient monies to pay all outstanding debt service. With regard to programs included in the budget such as education, roads, and corrections, we have not made any attempt to turn, to determine that the local government has complied with specific program statute or guidelines, or with any financial requirements prescribed by any state or federal agency. A property tax rate may be included in this budget and would recommend that local government officials be certain that all program requirements have been met before initiating the tax collection process. This letter constitutes approval by this camp, by this office for the county's two thousand fourteen fiscal year budget as adopted by the governing body. Sincerely, Senator Thompson. And this is to be entered into the minutes of the meeting also. Okay, the next item is considered roof on a public safety building. We have, uh, Ralph inspected that roof from the public safety building here about two or three weeks ago, and they got Mr. J. to Matt like to look at it. The roof has pulled back from the side about this, about this far in that right round.
Yeah.
And the insulation, I know it started absorbing water and it's soaking back in there. The, uh, the estimate on fixing that roof is gonna be around thirty-five thousand dollars. Be the same kind of roof that was put over on, on our, on the, on our building. And, uh, so I'm putting it up to y'all to see if y'all want to go ahead and proceed with this, to put out bids on it, to get it fixed, or whatnot.
Yes, Mike Morgan will fix the roof. Sorry.
Motion made, saying we fix the roof.
Have you got any more bids?
I'm not, I don't have a bid period yet. This is just the estimate on what's gonna come to do it. But I, I give, somebody could be, and here we will have to advertise bids for. But no bids, no bids have been taken, and no money, no, nothing like that.
Just for a new roof or to repair?
This is a new roof. There's a lot of rock that don't have like it was at the schools. Remember what kind of deal that was out there, that's why I tell them.
Does the motion need to be to advertise the bids or just the?
New what?
Does the motion need to be to advertise the bids?
Yes.
Like what, we advertise the bids to fix the roof? Thank you.
All right. We're assuming another motion, and we have some. Is any further discussion?
What, what type of roof are we looking at, just what's on there now?
It's the, it's the rubber membrane that's, uh, got a, maybe forty-year, uh, worn down.
It's good stuff. No gravity?
No gravity.
Right. Where you need to go in the night.
Some people did ask about putting a, a, uh, uh, a different roof on it.
Pitch roof.
Pitch roof, thank you, yeah. Pitch roof, but you're gonna be looking at probably something, you gotta have architect on that. You probably look tomorrow night too, about a hundred, a hundred and five thousand dollars on that, that's the estimate. You have to get architect involved in, because they don't work for anything. Okay, any further discussion? If not, y'all.
Do you have something to say?
Did you have something to say?
No, I was gonna, what could be so big bad?
Okay.
Reminding you.
All right. Everybody understand the motion now, that the motion is to advertise for bids to fix the roof on a public safety building. And the motion is set. On the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried. The next item is, uh, out here is, Mr. Robert Holmes came to me about two weeks ago, wanted to sell us the, the house and acre lot behind us, his dad used to have. He originally had eighty-nine thousand dollars for it, come down to seventy-nine thousand. I'm gonna leave it up to y'all whether you're interested in it or not. Uh, I might have a land, but I, I don't know what we do with the house, because we just sold the house and somebody moved it, so. That's entirely up to y'all whether you're gonna buy it or not. One acre.
Other than parks, what use could this be?
Right now, I don't know again. Down the road, I don't know.
Court bid down here now, I don't know where, I don't see us really.
Okay.
How do we pay for it?
Well, you take it out, you know, I don't know, I don't fund, buy us a pay for it if you want to.
We have a bunch of spare money in there.
Yes. All right.
If not, maybe we can have a legal court, I don't think legal.
Okay. All right, now your motion, that we approve or disapprove of then, or buy it or don't buy it?
Make the motion, we don't buy.
Now here's second. All right, everyone understand the motion? This motion is not to buy or profit, okay? On the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried. We're gonna get this taken care of, except for the ambulance deal. Med Center people came to me about, about a month ago, yes, and, of course, we've had a contract down there since nineteen ninety-eight, I believe it is, ninety-five or ninety-eight. We've paid him one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars a year, and we've also bought, bought an ambulance every other year. They're saying they're losing a bunch of money, and they won't go up on that. They first started at eighty-five thousand, then they came back and seconded that down to sixty-five thousand. Sixty-five thousand dollars this year, and twenty thousand dollars next year, and twenty thousand dollars next year. And I told them no, but I would leave it up to the county commission. We could look at it, discuss it. Uh, we've got some options that we could bid it. Uh, Benton County just bid theirs last Thursday. Med Center come in, it's now, there's a difference in us and Benton County, because Benton County has three, three houses, or three, uh, stations. Got one in Hollow Rock, one in, uh, Camden, and it's, it's Bruce, didn't it?
Big San.
Big San, big, thank you, Big San. Med Center bid come in at six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I asked, I called the mayor today and asked him what their, what were they paying? He said, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. But they went up and asked eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Med won a Shelby County bid, four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. But, um, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but I think if we can keep it at one-sixty-five, that's what we need to do. Other option would be operate ourselves, which I'm not wholeheartedly interested in that, but, you know, if y'all are, we, we can. Now, three other counties around do it, are operating their own ambulances. Hardwood County is making money with theirs. Decatur County, the mayor told me last Thursday night that they was making about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars last year. Crockett County is operating theirs, and theirs is a plan. But, you know, it's costing us one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Plus every other year it's costing another seventy-five thousand dollars for an ambulance. So one year it's costing us one-hundred-and-seventy-five, next year it's costing us two-forty.
Plus we also have to, uh, re-refurbish the existing offices.
That, that's all we're gonna say, five thousand dollars, that's for the, for the chassis again, refurbishment. Now, one thing.
Motion we spent past where we at. See, if they're really serious, I, I could believe they're serious, because they come in here a few years ago, playing with the, having a bid insured. After about three meetings, we kind of blew away like the dust.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, if we bid it out, you know we've got twelve Cherokee County employees that work there. Does that mean that people that bid on, give little people a chance to work with it, or did we lose those people?
We can put, put that in the, in the requirements on the bid if you want to say.
Well, there, there's twelve people, I talked to a group of them, there's twelve people that work there twenty-four seven, uh, scheduled.
Right.
And they have a feeling people, but they're all twelve in Cherokee County, and if something happens, they're gonna lose their, their ability.
Well, they've already cut, as I understand it, they've already cut some of the, uh, employees, or some of the members, have they not?
Cut some of the pit, yes.
Have they, have they made any reductions to, to CEOs or? Type or?
No, that's a question that I ask, and of course you know what the answer was, but.
I personally would be inclined, I must say, to operate, uh, say, if you're not.
So when we operated ourselves, that one bottomless pit.
Well.
I tell you that.
Wait just a second, we've got a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second, his motion, the leader like he is, one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars? Now we got a second, now we want a discussion, now go, go ahead, uh, researches.
Uh, I, I'm just, I'm just in favor of going back and operating itself, these, these CEO salaries and, and so forth, and seat and a lot. And I'd rather have it self-managed, and that way we would be assured that at least these twelve employees would, uh, would be here with us, they, uh, I talked to two, the two, the two that I talked to is combined, probably combined totally, uh, fifty years' experience. And so, surely, surely, with that amount of employees, uh, we could, we could sell that thing and manage it. I understand that fellow commission was concerned about things being bottomless pit, because all of you that's been around Cherokee County for a while remembers, we've had several bottomless pits that was mismanaged.
Let me say this, we were starting it, it's like we walked through on a certain amount, about middle year, uh, Mr. Ferris come back, he needed another one. Now, I'm seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, our, our, my, my, we let him come up with it, and then we started to close down. That's when we started looking at it, letting it go to, you know, bidding it out. And he, Mr. Ferris himself was typical when Madison County got him about there at the meeting. He thought they could buy supplies, of course, he hired Madison County, hired the, our employees, he hired him, wanted to buy. He thought that being a slave group definitely could buy a bigger bulk of supplies, it probably saved money along the, but, uh, uh, I'd say, uh, he, he's run out of money halfway through.
Did he own that ambulance authority himself?
He owned the building, he owned the building out there. I didn't know if he owned the building.
He owned, he showed us, he owned one there.
And he was also something, was also something in him, and, and he, you know, that made more money halfway to turn.
I see why he owned the building, got a job up there.
But the, the thing about this, is, is, is I'm not totally against us running it for sale either. It becomes to that, but I don't think we're too that way. But keep in mind, all Cherokee County owns is three ambulances. That's all we own. We don't own a building, we don't own a band-aid, we don't own a heart monitor, we don't own an ambulance. So if we decided that that's something we would want to do, it would be a major investment just to get started. So keep that in mind, that, yeah, I don't, I don't think it'd be bottomless pit now, I don't think so. But I think we would have to dig deep into the well, we'd have to reach deep into the county's pocketbooks to get the money to start this. I think, I think that's in the corner of the, I'll just be honest with you. They come in here like, like Blackstock said a few years ago, wanting a half million dollars. We, we messed around with them about three meetings, and finally they come back in there and it's clear. They wasn't winning the money they made. So, keep in mind, if we wanna run our answers, we can do it, and in two or three years, we could probably make a little money. We're gonna have to invest a ton of money to get started.
How many more answers will we have to pay?
If you, if we do our own ambulances, I, I just work for you, and I know a lot of guys out there. They're running two trucks twenty-four seven, all right, but they're also bringing a truck to Jackson down here, a lot of it. And they're getting our trucks, that's, that's why the Med Center wants to get rid of it, because they depend too much on our truck. If they do it away with this service, they're gonna have to have a truck in Jackson. If we run our own service, we're gonna have to run two trucks twenty-four seven, and at least Monday through Friday, we're gonna run a third truck, twelve hours a day, because we rely on that heavy on Jackson. You're talking about, you're talking about adding employees. The employees, and I'm not against cutting employees, but when you add employees, you add retirement, you add insurance, you add the cost of living rates, you add recurring expenses. Now, I think we can make money down the road, but I just don't think we're ready right now to make that kind of investment unless we have to. But I, I think Med Center's calling it, I'll be honest with you.
We'd have to buy building relations, uh, to venture out.
Very.
Sir, what committee would you follow?
The ambulance committee.
We have an influence.
Ambulance first on committee, they was.
Yeah.
So, so that was a, it's, uh, are you on Jackie?
Yeah.
Jackie, yeah. Ms. George, Russell.
Alan.
Ms. Hires, Larry Blackstock.
We have that, he might, it's mine, I think.
Yeah, we have.
Mine.
My, that's right.
Same one from the first one.
Yes, it's the same one, yes.
I think the committee ought to do that debate, and, and look at all three of y'all, bid it out, call in their gloves, or do it themselves. You say these people are profitable, we always want to make money and add people, looks like that's the way to do it. I'm understanding this will work, but, you know, we got work to make.
Right.
And he took the records of the volume of calls. Hardwood County's running all of that, Grand Junction gives them a lot of bids where it's going down there. Uh, if we don't have the volume of calls, make it pay off over the years, then it might be something that, that will be more critical. But, uh, you know, the records of how many calls they've made, Jake's calls, and how long we take to pay out, pay out the calls we have.
She gave us that figure when we met with her, and none of us agreed to give her that much money.
Yeah, because that night, it was on the season, maybe, I think, because it was basically.
Nine calls a day throughout this last year.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. And they also said that the average call for, for average call was like four-hundred-and-thirty-something dollars. But some calls are maybe a thousand dollars.
The biggest, I'm sorry, the biggest, biggest difference in, they get on a charge on Medicare, Medicare A, because they're not our organization's supposed to. If we added what the other counties are doing, they're charging on Medicare B, which is roughly our, our pay. Uh, the cloud crystal ball, no, I do, I take them, but I don't know.
Of course, my understanding is, uh, Mr. Chairman, that it costs possibly fifteen thousand dollars out here. As Brother Pro said, we don't own an asthma, we don't buy them, because hospitals charge you about eight bucks for an asthma. But it's my understanding that's outfit, well, according to state standards, runs about fifteen thousand dollars more liters.
Probably.
See, uh, Jackie Challenger, the call, uh, average ambulance call for Cherokee County was, uh, about twelve hundred dollars when they called him out. Well, the actual expense, he told me, like Jackie said, it's a hundred and some dollars, he said, well, you're making money off it. Well, there's so many of them that they don't get any money, so we have, we gotta pay for that too. Well, that was a big difference.
Also, your liability insurance is gonna go away, you know.
No talent, that's a liability. You deal with insurance?
Yeah. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to leave it at as is, go back to them, we talked to them, and leave it as is, it's for the time being. Got a second on it?
Second.
It's already, it's already second. Is there any further discussion on it?
We got a motion on the floor for the runner herself, we have a whole second.
We don't, we don't, if you make a motion on that, you can get discussed it, that's why I stopped him when he was seconding it before we go any further discussion on it. Okay?
All right. My understanding, Brad, if we're going, I have to make it with him again.
Yes.
Discuss this one with further about, either paying them or not paying. Sixty-something thousand dollars.
No, we, we, but, the motion is, the motion was made to leave it at one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars as is.
But I heard we're gonna be paying any regulations.
Right, and with the committee meeting, we're then begin to discuss this with further. Is there any further discussion on this? Everybody understand the motion? We're gonna leave it at one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars as is. On the first say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Take a look, we have a look, come on.
Jerry Low?
Yes.
Anthony Naylor?
Yes.
Larry Blackstock?
Yes.
Al McKenna?
Yes.
Sam Crow?
Yes.
Jackie Butler?
Yes.
John Allen Moore?
No.
Buster Plank?
Yes.
Buddy Ricks?
No.
Gary Emerson?
Yes.
Senator Ires?
Yes.
Joe Flarrow?
Yes.
Barry Hudson?
Yes.
Barry Smith?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
John L. Welch?
Yes.
Diane Alexander?
Yes.
Here at that?
Yes.
Sixteen to carry.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, the next item is, any other business come forward, commissions, you know, have anything like to bring up? When I, I'll just like say anything.
Oh, when we asked about what happened to the savings, and when we had those put down there, and we were looking at getting another grant for next year. Did we lose that?
They didn't offer anymore, time being. Part, part of that was something to spend most of the money that ran out. But don't, believe me, if we get a chance, we'll be, we'll be asking for it again. Anyone else that would like to say, like, address the commission on any line?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know this has been brought up about three or four times, when we want to get that big drive courthouse.
That's a good question.
That's been approved, that's like, what, three years ago, or like two?
If you get the state to get in high gear, then we'll get it done. The money's there, we're just waiting on, they're, they're okay, we're just staying in bar bones for, I think, over a year, which I think was ridiculous, but I think, I, I think we'll have the word on it this week hopefully. But it has to be started, and of course, we're, we're losing money, so, now, maybe one reason why they opened it back, I don't know for sure, but. Anyone else? Okay, next item is charge the district.
I have two, Trump, Dean Lawton, and Bobette Johnson.
Motion to charge.
Motion made, and secondly, charge the district who presented, any discussion? Motion made, and secondly, charge the districts is presented, any discussion? If no, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried, next item is motion to charge.
No move.
Motion made, secondly, turn on, say aye.
Aye.